This is the regular meeting of the City Planning Commission. When the petition, special land use, or site plan approval request in which you're interested is called, please come forward after the staff announces the case. Please give your name, address, to the secretary for the record. After the appellant presentation, others may comment. An affirmative vote of the majority of the members present is necessary to grant a petition, special land use, or site plan approval. Recommendations on all petitions made by the commission are then forwarded to City Council. If there are no further questions, the secretary will call roll, and then we will begin with our first item of business.
Nash, Jones, Doane, Taggett, Sawerco, Hanley, Caloris, Nightingale. We have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from July 23rd.
Do I hear a motion to approve? I move adoption.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Under new business, the first case is case number thirteen, one thousand and one. Old Town Christian Outreach requests a site plan review for a four thousand square foot accessory building at six hundred Grashit to be used for clothing distribution.
Good evening. My name is Bill Burns, representing Old Town Christian Outreach Center, AKA Old Town Soup Kitchen, six hundred Grashit, Saginaw, Michigan. I come before your day requesting your approval to construct this building that is going to be used primarily for clothing intake, sorting, and then distribution to those in need. Through our program of hot meals, and then also our Saturday grocery giveaway, we get to see many, many people in need who not only need good nutrition in their bodies, but they also need clothing on them. And unique to this particular program is that not only will we continue the giving away of adult clothing, but we're going to have a special section in this building specifically for children from the ages of one to twelve. I can't tell this commission strongly enough how many kids we see coming to our various programs that have little or no winter clothing. Some come with a light jacket, and maybe their parent has a blanket thrown over them. Other kids don't have the blanket. And what we're looking to do is to address this specific group, being able to adequately clothe them in both the summer and the winter. So for the public good, I am requesting this commission's approval as shown on our drawings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm sure we have some questions. And one question that I have is because it's kind of stated here that, you know, it's on six hundred Grashit, but your actual site plan is kind of...
This, excuse me, this particular site is the five hundred block, South Webster.
Okay. And where is that?
It'd be considered the west side of that street.
Six hundred. So it's across the street from the...
It is, on parcel of property that we already have our grocery food storage building on, and also a parking lot where we do the Saturday distribution. This building is adjacent to that parking lot.
New building, not an addition, correct?
New building.
Okay. And I see from the plans here as well, and we always ask this, you know, is there going to be like an area that you'll have to maybe have a dumpster there, you know, to get rid of things that are no longer useful?
Yes.
Okay.
We would adequately take care of that, yes.
And with that said, you know, when do you look at starting this project if you were to get approval for the project?
Within two to three weeks.
Two to three weeks, that quick?
Yes.
And the completion would be?
By February first. We want to get this up so we can get that winter clothing coming in.
So it could be before February, but you really want to...
Yes, sir.
We'll give you enough time.
Is this just a storage facility, or will it also be distribution? Will the public be coming here to get receipt items?
They will, free of charge.
Okay. Is the building heated?
Yes.
Okay. I'm assuming forced air?
Tube heating.
Okay. Is the interior, it doesn't, unless I'm reading it wrong, it doesn't show up on the wall sections in that that have been supplied, but is the interior space going to be finished? Meaning is there going to be drywall on the walls?
No. What we do is we build a pole building that has on the exterior, you have plywood, and then your typical siding, vinyl siding on the outside. Inside, we spray with insulation, which gives you a good, smooth finish.
Okay. That was going to be my next question about insulating the building. This is, if I understand correctly, this is across the street from your current building, correct?
It is.
And there's a parking lot with that building?
Yes.
So when someone comes to this building to pick up items in that, where will they be parking?
Okay. On our Saturday distribution, one of the problems that we addressed, there was an issue with the city, was that very question of parking. Now that we're in the block, across the street, across South Harrison, we use the main campus parking for parking.
So you're not using that for distribution and taking spots away from parking?
We use the parking lot that's off Harrison as distribution, yes.
This is my question to staff. Has engineering submitted any...
They have not submitted a final report. They've looked at these plans, they're pretty much in agreement. The only thing that they're waiting to have added to this plan is the size of the pipe to connect to the water in the sewer. And I was told this afternoon that once that's put on the plan, which Mr. Burns is aware of, that they have no other objections to the project.
Okay. So that's the only thing that's holding it up from the city side?
That's the only thing that's holding it up. And then they'll write their final report at that point.
Yes, sir.
What kind of permits are required for this?
They'll need to get building permits and electrical and plumbing permits, and those will all be needed before we can start work.
Can I hear your approval?
And I believe Mr. Burns is in the process of getting engineer drawings at this point to get to the building department.
Stamp drawings will be available to city inspector within a week.
I have a question. I don't know if this is to you, Mr. Burns, or to staff. There's reference here in the considerations that there will be a, some type of landscaping or some type of aesthetic barrier, because this is adjacent to a residential neighborhood.
I can address that. Yes, we're going to have shrubbery all around the building, and blowers where appropriate. We make it a nice looking building, as many people know, we do a good job at that.
Now, the shrubbery would be on the Webster and Lyon perimeters?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I noticed in the drawing that there's a wooden fence along the property line.
That's existing now. We've torn down a number of buildings in that area, because that has been one of the remaining items on the property.
Okay. So that's not a fence that you constructed?
No.
You inherited that?
Yes, we did.
What condition is that fence in?
It's in good condition, structurally, it's in good condition.
So you plan to keep it?
Yes. Oh, in its location? No, because we want to be able to get distribution to our parking lot.
So you're going to remove it?
Yes, sir.
Oh.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Burns, the new driveway, I'm a little confused as to where it exits. Can you guide me on that, please?
Yes, sir. It exits into our parking lot off Harrison.
Into a parking lot?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And if the commissioners aren't familiar with that area, this group, at their own expense, have taken at least down one very decrepit old apartment building and done a lot to beautify the neighborhood. If you're not familiar with the drive-by, you'll see it's very, very neat. It's a true asset. And I didn't catch the completion date, please.
February first.
Is that going to be adequate time?
It, yes, it will be.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Burns? Any more questions for Mr. Burns?
Not for me.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the site plan? And this is contingent on the approval from city engineering, once that's all in, for the construction of the outreach building, accessory building, with the completion date of two, one, fourteen.
I move adoption.
Do I hear a second?
Support.
Okay. All right. Do we have any discussion on this agenda item? No? Okay. At this time, we'll go for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any opposing? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Your point of view.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Second item on the agenda is case number thirteen, one thousand. Saginaw County Mental Health requests a site plan review for the repaving of a parking lot at twenty-seven oh-six West Genesee with a few alterations to the parking lot as well.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. My name is Jay Wheeler, William Kibbie and Associates, a couple doors down on Washington Avenue, fourteen seventy-five. With me is project architect Ken Nye, also Kibbie and Associates. Basically, what we want to do is that existing parking area that's between the buildings that sit back off Genesee and Bay, where Saginaw County Mental Health has used this building, this building, these two buildings. And the existing parking lot is concrete, it's in rather rough shape. Some of the catch basins have heaved, and water goes right past them and kind of drains into this back corner now. And there's plenty of trip hazards around the parking lot with the concrete moving and heaving that's been in there for quite some time. So the thought is they're doing some work, interior remodeling of the buildings, and doing a small addition off the backside of this building. With that going on, it was felt that they should look at redoing the site parking as part of that overall remodeling. We've made some improvements to the site. A vast improvement will be you'll be able to see where the parking places are. I think the striping is pretty much nonexistent on the lot. We're replacing the storm sewer line going back to the right-of-way at Genesee, picking up that existing lead and putting in new catch basins to serve the lot. We've taken bids, the base bid is looked at as concrete with an alternate for asphalt, so we're hopeful we can put it back as concrete. But if it's cost prohibitive, we might have to go to asphalt. Either way, it's going to be a hard surface lot. Right now, there's a couple of dumpsters on site. We're going to kind of organize those and put them in two areas. There'll be two up here in enclosure with six-foot-high enclosure and gated doors on it. One will be for recycling, the other one for trash. And then we've got one more back in this corner that'll also have an enclosure around it. We're increasing the landscape area. Right now, this is asphalt to the west of this existing building where the new addition is planned. And we'll have a kind of a sitting area. It's bordered by some existing evergreen trees. And that'll go, what this new addition area is, is kind of a recreation room there, a TV room, if you will. And then there'll be this outdoor kind of sitting area back there. Those existing approaches onto Genesee remain in the same location. There is an existing drive that's kind of tucked in between these existing buildings. It doesn't meet the city standard for the width of the drive. What we plan to do with that is turn that into a pedestrian corridor that'll tie in with the walk along State Street and tie in with the site to try to make that a little safer area there, because it's tough to see between the buildings, and to negotiate that with a vehicle is pretty tough. So the thought was making it a safer area and more of a campus-like feel, that that would be better served as a pedestrian corridor instead of a vehicle drive. In addition to the challenge, there is an existing pole that's kind of right in the approach that makes it very difficult to negotiate out onto State Street. We've provided sixty-one spaces. That includes, I believe, four handicap spaces, three, four handicap spaces, which would meet the ADA requirements. We'll also be upgrading the lighting with shoebox-type fixture to prevent any light trespass, but the existing lights are the old style, where light just goes everywhere. I think that's it. The plans have been submitted to engineering. Might have some preliminary comments back, but I haven't seen anything in writing yet, so your approval would need to be contingent on those city engineers' comments on the site.
I have had discussions with engineering. We don't have anything in writing yet. They just have a few small concerns, and one that I know of is about one of the catch basins, and that's just questions. But overall, they're, they've approved the project. I just have nothing in writing at this point.
No questions. Just for clarification, let's go to State Street. You have three existing buildings from left to right, the first one being three zero seven something two hundred, the long building?
Mm-hmm.
The driveway you allude to, is that between that and the building to his right?
Correct.
Okay. And that's a common driveway that you are now using?
It's not a common driveway. The driveway is on the parcel of that long building. So it is fully on that parcel.
And on the existing building that you show on West Genesee, to the west of it, I see a parking lot. Is that an existing parking lot now? I'm trying to visualize it.
Are you talking about in the area of the new addition, Mr. Burns?
No. It's called existing building, and it faces West Genesee. It's the one of the, directly behind that long, long building.
Okay.
And to the left of that, going west, I see a parking lot.
Yes, there is...
Is that an existing parking lot?
There is existing parking in there, yes. Yep. So part of that hard surface would be turned into lawn and kind of a walking path in that back area there.
That's the one that you have on the shrubbery?
Yes, sir.
Enclosing the west and south?
Yep. And that shrubbery is existing. Those are, I think...
And then your driveway would come in off West Genesee only?
Yes. There is no drive on the west side of that building currently, so we're not removing a drive in that area. In fact, those that walk in those pines or arborvitae that are along there are existing.
I'm looking at West Genesee, directly west of the building that's on the corner. Building in the corner of West Genesee and Bay.
Oh, sure.
And I'm looking at West Genesee. Is there a driveway there?
There are two drives there currently.
And you intend to maintain both the driveways?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. And that'll be your main access to the parking lot?
Correct. Yep. That will be the main access.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
I do have a question now. When you're going to be replacing this whole parking lot, are you just, are you going to take it right down to the base, or you're taking all the asphalt, the cement?
Yeah, actually, we're taking that kind of busted-up concrete, and we're going to be bringing in crushed concrete for a base for the new concrete, so it's total recycling, if you will. We're going to, that current busted-up concrete parking lot is going to end up in a truck going to Eggers Recycling, and it's going to be crushed up for use as base in the new parking lot.
So when do you plan on starting this?
We would probably start as soon as we have final engineering approval, which is estimated later this week, so we could start as soon as one to two weeks from today.
And a completion date?
We're probably going to want a little bit of time in the spring to address any adjacent green areas and landscaping, so it's probably, we're going to need a couple of months in the spring of good weather. I would say July first would be a good completion date, but most of the work will be done yet this fall.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Jay, you mentioned that you were going to get an alternate bid to go to asphalt?
Correct.
What are you doing with the existing concrete, then, if you're going to asphalt?
The existing concrete would have to be removed from site.
Okay.
Yep.
And then...
And then there'd be a full asphalt section.
Okay.
Stone base and new asphalt.
And you show a new addition on drawing C three point one?
Mm-hmm.
I guess this may be a question for staff. Are we just approving the parking lot, or are we approving the new addition also?
You should be doing the new addition also. This came to me in two steps. First was just the new addition, which would not have needed planning commission approval because of the smallness of the size.
Okay.
And, but then when the parking lot became part of it, then it needed to come to you. So you should do a full approval on everything.
So my next question, then, is typically we require exterior elevations of the building for any additions, if we're having to grant approval on the whole package.
There were some, on the very first plan that I received, there were some elevations on there.
We submitted building plans, your documents, building park. So they do have the elevations, the building department does, but I did not...
But we don't.
We don't have, I don't have them right now. I did see them, that was months ago. And I did see them, and like you said, they've been submitted to the building department.
Ken, maybe you can describe the...
Well, we're basically following the same format of the building that's existing. It has a siding type of fascia, deep fascia, that we're replacing, because right now it's dilapidated and needs to be replaced. So we're replacing it with the same type of material that's there right now. As you follow around the addition, we repeat that theme of the deep four-foot fascia coming around the corner. We open up that outdoor space as much as possible for the lighting. The people using that area to walk out and go into that nice area, lock it all in, they will take advantage of that. So we have some high-vity windows following around the corner to open up the room in the area toward the parking. We have full-height walls so that they're not looking at the back of cars.
Is it brick veneer, Ken?
Yes, it's all brick. It's brick veneer, construction matching the brick veneer on the condo type building. So it would be basically a brick structure with a flat roof on the evening road.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I have nothing against this plan, but I'm concerned whether we're setting a precedent of approving what's on our main page here without any reference...
To the addition?
To that addition.
I know, and I'm concerned...
Are we, are we setting a, I have nothing against your program, please, believe me. Are we setting a precedent of approving this without alluding to the addition?
Well, I have concern about that, too, because we stopped the Fauchet Dental Building because they were doing something with the parking lot exterior, and then all of a sudden we saw an addition on there, and we did not approve that. We had them come back once they had the site plan and elevations.
I guess that it's my fault that it's not in your narrative in the staff recommend, or not recommendation, but the staff sheet. And that was an oversight on my part, because like I said, the one part, the addition, came to me months ago, and I would have given it approval at that time. And then when the parking lot came in, that's what I put on the sheet. It should have been the whole project.
Yeah. Well... So has the addition already been approved?
No. I don't, it has?
Under construction, yes.
Oh, it's, okay, so I gave that approval before, and then...
It's under construction right now. It's under construction.
Okay. So, so actually, you guys are just approving the parking lot, because I did give approval months ago for the addition, because of, you know, at that point, anything, the ordinance states that if it's less than twenty-five percent of the main building, that staff can give that approval. And I gave that months ago. It just, it does appear on this plan. I wasn't aware the construction had started.
What was that twenty, what percentage was that?
If it's less than twenty-five percent of the main structure, then staff can approve it without it coming to the planning commission for a site plan review.
Less than twenty-five percent of the main structure?
Right.
So we're only dealing with the parking lot?
With the parking lot.
Okay, we're only going to do it with the parking lot?
Like my memo said, it is just the parking lot.
It is just the parking lot?
It says just site plan.
Okay. Do we have any more questions? Now that we've figured out that the building's under construction now...
In the full circle.
I'd just like you to document what I've already done.
Alrighty. We don't have to talk about the building. All right, do I hear a motion? Any more questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the Saginaw County Mental Health Parking Lot Repaving contingent on engineering's final approval on their plans, their portion of this, with a completion date of 7/1/2014?
Sumo.
Do I hear a second?
Support.
Do we hear, do we have any discussion about this? Or about this case? Okay, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
The next item on the agenda is case number 13999. It's a public hearing for Great Lakes Bay Services that is requesting a special approval for a retail landscaping business at 1503 Mackinac. This public notice was published in the Saginaw News and was also mailed to everyone within 300 feet of the property.
Good evening, Mark Knight with Great Lakes Bay Services, 2824 North Michigan Avenue. We are requesting approval for a retail landscaping supply business located at 1503 Mackinac. Our first plan would be getting and clean up the property. We would like to add on to the existing building, double the size of the building that's there now. Rebuild the office that's located there now. Move the fencing to make it a complete square lot. Consolidate down to probably three gates instead of five gates on the property. And we would be handling landscape supply materials.
My question is, would you consider landscape supplying materials?
Mulch, stone, any type of aggregate, black dirt, sand, items like that, boulders.
This is only gonna be a retail establishment?
Yes.
Okay, my next question is, your business, what does it do beyond landscaping? Do you cut grass?
No, we actually manufacture mulch. Now, would not be manufactured on that site. We do some service work for Consumers Energy and we do some snoring. That's basically it. And we want to get into the landscape supply.
So if you were to cut grass, you're not gonna bring grass or?
No.
Timber to chop up there?
Have no intention of cutting grass except my own.
Except your own. And you're not going to use that as a site where you're gonna bring timber in and make mulch there?
No.
How do you plan on storing these materials?
We're gonna install bins for the material to stay in, for the mulch, the stone, and so on.
And a rough size of a bin would be?
Oh, probably 20 foot wide by 20 foot deep.
And how many would you anticipate you would have on the site?
No more than a dozen.
Can I ask this question?
Mm-hmm.
How come we don't have a site plan right now for this property?
Well, I did a rough sketch on there. We weren't gonna put all the money into a site plan until we knew that we would be able to operate in there and have a professional site planned it. We went in and took some elevations in there, made sure everything is draining. There are two drains located on the property there. And I did a rough sketch of the entire property and then the proposed areas of what we want to improve on.
My question is, these proposed bins, are they adjacent to any residential property?
No, there is an apartment complex where they would be on that side.
And how high is the gate gonna be? Because I'm sure you're gonna have to just gate everything off, because you don't want anybody taking your mulch.
There's existing fence there now and I'm gonna say it's seven foot. There is fencing that we have to repair, it's just got two holes and it's all chain link fence.
Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, I'm looking at the map here. You front Mackinac.
Yes.
Are you starting at the center or you're starting at Andre?
It would be on Andre Street there.
Andre Street.
Yes, but the fence isn't, there are some, there's a business. That property doesn't go all the way to the corner there. It would be, it's about three quarters of that property.
I'm trying to figure out how much of this block, 2-2-1, you're gonna encompass. You're encompassing all of Mackinac between Andre and Bates?
Three quarters of it.
Three quarters of it.
Yeah, but it's the entire fenced-in area there. I don't know what your map's showing there. It's not a square block.
Does that take you to?
It's, there's Lyons on the back side, Mackinac on the front. Bates would be to the east and we do not go all the way over to Andre Street.
Could you clarify according to the picture we have, maybe would be a good idea? I think I know what you just said, but on that picture.
So is this right here?
Okay.
This one right there?
This, that is that.
Okay, now I know where you're headed.
Yep, and here is, here's right here. This property, can I draw on your map?
Yeah.
This property is right.
Bob? This here is probably here.
And what we wanna do, and I'm drawing this, see this fence goes zigzag like so.
That line of course.
You wanna come across this?
I'm trying to find Bates. This is Bates right here.
Okay, and then this is the building you wanna do the addition on?
Exactly, yes.
Right, okay, now I know.
But so the property you are making an offer on is this?
This property right here, yes.
Yeah.
See, it doesn't, it's three quarters of it, I think probably not 2547. And this is where, this is where those bins would be, right here. This is not, this is a garage.
And what are these businesses here?
This is an auto repair shop. This is the apartment complex here.
Down here, and what is here?
This is the parking area, that's a garage, that's just a garage that I talked to a gentleman owns, he lives in this apartment shop right here.
Okay, thank you.
So to clarify, the property you are making the offer on is, kinda computer them, that rectangle or is it?
I still didn't give you.
That rectangle, yes.
Can I see Jim Don's map?
It's the ones that are identified as parcel numbers 2547 and 2548.
Okay, got it.
549 parcel?
No, 547 and 548.
Right here.
We should have asked that first.
You have the block, really.
Over to Bates?
Yeah. But not to Andre.
You go to Andre.
No, do you want me to show you on your map?
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
Well, it's better to show it on this section.
Mr. Dalton has it, I don't have it.
Let me just draw.
Yeah, is this?
Nope, here's the property lying right, right there.
So it's.
Andre is here.
And your property is where?
It's gonna be right here. This whole square, we're gonna even this fence up.
So you go all the way to?
Right to Lyons, Mackinac, Bates, and then this whole is owned by.
Okay.
This map, this map right here, these are the limits.
Yes, and this parcel right here, I believe is a railroad.
Yeah, I know there's an access lines all the way through.
I have this right here. Did it already reach you?
Yes, it did.
Anybody else want me to draw on their map?
No, I know how to draw. I think I know what you're talking about.
What are we doing for parking?
Pardon me?
What are you doing about parking?
Parking would be, there's some spaces right along, it's a cutout area past the curb on Mackinac. And then we would have some additional parking. We're not gonna require that much parking in there, but it would be in the lot, inside the fenced-in area.
Oh, and the entrance to it will be off Mackinac?
There is an entrance off Mackinac. It probably, the entrance would probably, we're gonna reduce down, there's like, there's five, there's five gates there now. We'd probably reduce down to two to three, no more than three. Plug those gates right off. There's an entrance on Mackinac, there's an entrance on Bates, there's three on Lyons.
You have five gates currently and you're gonna reduce it down to three or two?
Two to three, no more than three.
So if I want to buy mulch from your establishment, I bring my pickup truck or whatever and I drive in one of those into your lot and then?
We'll load you, you go out, we'll deliver to you.
You create your own mulch?
Yes, not on that proper deal.
Not on that proper?
No.
What about, I noticed in the packet that we got, there's some consideration giving, given for service vehicles and equipment.
Yes.
Can you talk about what that involves?
There's gonna be some loading equipment there, there'd be some front-end loaders there. Skid steer, backhoe, and probably a dozer would be there just parked once in a while. And then some large vehicles, not a whole fleet of trucks would be in there though. We need, we need delivery vehicles, which would be our larger trucks.
Question for staff, you noticed the residents within 300 feet?
Yes, we did.
Did we get any response?
I had no response.
He had no response, no response.
And there's nobody in the audience that's speaking on this?
That's the current owner, behind me.
By me?
I'm the president of Happy Block Supply, I was forced to retire into a range of.
Are you a fellow?
Yes.
Nice to meet you.
Jim was his father.
By me?
Jim was his father.
And Merle was my grandfather, he started the business and then.
Okay. Are you opening up the fort? Yes, we are. So I guess we don't have anybody opposing this in the audience, is that correct? And we have the current owners and the potential owner. No one has responded.
I have a question for staff. This requires special approval?
It does because it's an outside business.
What is the definition exactly?
Of a special approval?
Of an outside business?
Anything.
Open-air business.
Any open-air business, anything that's conducted outside of a building.
Was it the previous business that were partially open-air?
It was all open-air, it was bricks, yeah.
Yes.
So what's the difference between what was there before and was proposed today?
Well, it's been not operated for over a year, so you still need the special approval for the business.
It's been closed for three years or two years?
It only needs one year.
How long's it been closed?
That, I know it's been more than a year.
It's a little bit over a year now. It might sort of get bad and I had to call.
I see, I see where you're going.
Now, one thing I want you to consider is staff did not believe that there's enough information here for you to actually approve this at this point. Mr. Knight was more looking at the idea of, is this something that you would approve before he purchased the building? Engineering has concerns, they have some, they looked at the elevations there in the northeast corner near where it says office. They're not sure how that drains at that point, they would want further elevations. They've also said that they would require curb and sidewalk all the way around the property. They were not ready to make any recommendations till there's a formal site plan.
So, question for staff, by granting, how do you put it? Approval for an open-air business, a special approval for an open-air business, we're not actually granting site plan approval?
You are not.
Right, because we can't, there's not enough information here.
Right, there's not.
So why are we granting?
What I would ask you to do at this point is to postpone this.
The site plan.
Until the site plan comes in.
So for this gentleman's knowledge, to make his decision on whether to buy the property or not, there is nothing within the zoning ordinance that would prohibit him from opening up his business at this site?
No, there is not. It's Zone B2, that block and a quarter is Zone B2.
So that should address your concerns, there is nothing here that would prohibit you from opening up that business. However, we can't grant site plan approval until we have a formal site plan to look at.
I understand, I understand.
And city engineering is satisfied with what's been submitted in.
Okay, I have a question. When you mentioned curb and gutter, there is curb and gutter around everything there that I know.
Engineering didn't seem to think so and you'd have to meet the handicap requirements in that area as well as far as ramps go. There may be the main concerns.
That might be, okay.
On that point, the south property line, butts other process, so you wouldn't have a sidewalk there, would you?
No, not on the.
So it's just the three sides?
It's just, it would be on the three side.
Apparently, no, there's no sidewalk that goes down. There is on Mackinac. There's no sidewalk on Bates.
They would require that you put one in on Bates, yes, they would. They want one around this property, that's one thing they specifically said.
May I make this suggestion to you that maybe you want to sit down with the engineering department before you make your final decision?
Yes, I will.
On purchasing the property?
I think what Mr. Knight was looking for from you at this point is, do you see any other special conditions that you would put on this for him to operate that business?
Nothing above and beyond what the zoning ordinance is gonna require.
Well, that's the thing, with special approval, you have the right to put other conditions on the property for it to operate, that's what the special approval is, is you can put other conditions.
Such as hours of operation?
Hours of operation or landscaping or.
But wouldn't we stipulate that when he comes back for formal approval on the site plan?
You would.
Do we need to stipulate that now?
You don't need to stipulate it now, you're right, you would stipulate it with the final approval, but you might give him some ideas of what you would require for that special approval to go through.
Personally, I think that like Commissioner Taggart says, you really need to work with the actual city engineers and then come back to us with an actual formal site plan. And then, you know, present that to us and then we'll make the decision at that point. Nothing really can stop you right now, it's just that the business has been closed for over a year, so.
Do we want to give him a heads up as to kinds of things that we would expect to see in a site plan?
Well, fencing, landscaping. Landscaping. Your lighting on the site is gonna have to be in such a way that it doesn't spill over onto adjacent residential properties. I would definitely think that in regards to where the apartment building is, that's a residential use, you're gonna have to really screen for that. Hours of operation, again, I don't know that I'm ready to discuss that one at this point, but that is something we will have to take under consideration. You know, because we're not gonna want traffic coming in and out of there till 10 o'clock at night.
Right.
Right, I understand.
So, I mean, I don't think that's.
We'd probably look at an eight to five.
Normal business hours, which would be fun. You know, and then we're looking at trash removal, you're gonna produce some trash, I'm sure, so.
There probably got one dumpster on the property, so.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
I've got a question for staff. The last time we had a. The last time we had a similar situation like this was on Mackinac, maybe around the 1700 block. There was a party store that ceased to be for two years. Someone tried to re-institute a party store there, and that was handled by the Zoning Board of Appeals. My question now is, why is this not at the Zoning Board of Appeals rather than here?
Because this is a new business, a new type of business, and it requires special approval from the planning commission before he can do the business because it is an outside operation.
That wouldn't come under the domain of the Zoning Board of Appeals?
No, it's something... It's special approval from the planning commission.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
And Commissioner Don?
All of these recent comments especially brings me back to a kind of a broader question, which is, this, as we know, is a small business area surrounded by residential. Is there any thought on the part of the staff or in the master plan about changing that?
There has been some talk about changing that. In the master plan, there are though what is called neighborhood commercial areas, and this could be considered one of those areas. We don't have a zoning classification as such at this time, but it could be considered a neighborhood zoning class... or neighborhood commercial area. Now, those areas, it's not spelled out very well in the master plan about what type of businesses would be allowed in those areas. We do have some other areas in the city where we're talking about rezoning this fall.
On this page, the pink areas are the B-2?
That's correct.
What's the yellow?
Yellow is...
Looks like R-3.
Which was your...
R-3.
Yellow is R-3.
Okay, which is apartments.
Apartment type of buildings. Now, the thing that we do have in this case is, we have an apartment building in the B-2 district as well. In that, I don't know what direction you would call it, the northwest corner. That is an apartment complex that's been built in the B-2 district.
Is that the parcel across the street there?
No, that's on the same... In that same block. That's the one designated as 2545.
So when we look on the pictures, it's...
Yes, right there. And the owner of that building owns that garage.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, one of the things that is in the zoning ordinance as well, although I don't believe it would apply here because that apartment complex is in the business district, is that there would be a five-foot fence. Not a five-foot fence, a five-foot cement wall. But because that apartment building is in the B-2 district, I don't believe it would apply. What the ordinance says is if a business district abuts a residential district, there has to be a solid five-foot cement wall between the properties.
But we could stipulate just a privacy fence there to screen.
Yes.
One thing we possibly should be considering is the hours of operating loading equipment.
Yeah, we're going to have him come back and we'll discuss it, his final site of plan.
Not only operation, but the used loading equipment after a specific hour, considering the fact it's in the neighborhood.
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion on that? All right. Do I hear a motion to postpone this case for Great Lakes Bay Services until we get official site plan? And also working with city to clear out some issues on the existing property?
Still moved.
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I think for the purpose of the public hearing, we need to have a date that you're postponing this hearing.
Well, till our next meeting.
Till the next meeting would be fine.
Next meeting, yeah, okay. Yarlsa? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
The next agenda item is case 13982. Mount Olive Institutional Missionary Baptist Church requests a site plan review to construct two parking lots, one at the southwest corner of Sixth and Norman, and one at the... I'm sorry, Sixth and Farwell, and one at the southeast corner of Sixth and Farwell.
We have allowed a opposition because you're here. Okay, no, I'm just kidding.
I'm John Valet with Civil Engineering Consultants, representing the petitioner. Dr. Desmond Daniels is the pastor of the church. Over the last few years, the church has...
Can you state your address for... We need you to state your address for the secretary.
Oh, sure. Forty-seven eighty Briarwood Court, Auburn, Michigan.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks. Over the last few years, the church has really grown and they've purchased some properties around the church. They've demolished a lot of dilapidated buildings that were in the area. There was a large pole bar... Pole building there, or machine shop, actually. A couple of years ago, they ripped that down. There's been an abandoned house. There's, I think, one time someone had said there was a little movie theater there that's been ripped down, and there's some footings that are still exposed in the ground, not very high, but they're still there, you can see them. But the church is gaining a lot of popularity and they need some additional parking. So, a couple of years ago, we did that parking lot to the south of the proposed parking lot, just reconstructed it. So they're looking at doing two parking lots, one on the east side of the road, one on the west side of the road. The one in the east is approximately 55 spaces, the one in the west is, I think, 39 or 40. They want to do one of them this year, so they took some construction bids already, and they want to do the one on the east side of the street this year yet. It's been to city staff, engineering. I don't know if you received a letter yet from engineering of approval. Mike called me from engineering and told me he was issuing the letter, I just haven't seen it yet.
I haven't seen it either, but I did talk to Beth London this afternoon, and she said the letter is coming, that they approved this.
They signed off on it.
Yes. As part of the parking lot, we have a small green belt in the middle of the parking lot, a little bit of landscaping they're going to do. It will be all asphalt hard surface. And as part of this, a little bit of a beautification, there are some sidewalks that are right adjacent to the back of curb that really are no longer serve any function for pedestrian walkways, so we're actually going to remove a lot of the concrete sidewalks that are directly behind the curb, leaving the pedestrian walkway back at the right-of-way line, and repairing and replacing the bad sections. We're also closing off a lot of the driveways that were previously there to each of the homes and putting in new curb approaches for... To facilitate the parking lot. So, they'd like to construct construction right-of-way. I mean, they might start next week if it's granted approval, and to be completed by November 15. And there's a small building addition that goes with it, but it's less than 25 percent, so you don't have to worry about it. Just kidding.
Oh, I was like, oh, don't pull that on us, really?
John, I have your phone number.
Right, I'm like, really? Okay, so this is my question. So these parking lots are in addition to what is there now? You're expanding the existing ones that you knocked down buildings and...
There's an existing one on the east, existing one on the west, and then they purchased the properties north of them and just expanding the existing parking lots.
And you're going to put lighting in here?
There's no plans for lighting right now. The lots that are there are not lit, and the church has never talked about it. I can't speak to that right now, but yes.
Gee, if it were... I think it gets dark around, what, 5:00 in the winter time, and then it ices over. If I were a parishioner there, I wouldn't want to slip and fall, but...
And I don't know anything about the hours of their services, I don't know. And there might be some street lighting, there might be some well-lighting that they don't feel is necessary at this time, but it was not part of the proposal right now.
I'm a fan of light, I'll just tell you that.
John?
Yes.
The landscaping island? What... I understand the purpose of landscaping, but what was the thought behind not being able to connect from the one parking lot to the other?
Or does it? I thought it did along the east side of the... Oh. No, it doesn't. At one time, we had that there, and apparently the church didn't want that. They're one-way lots, both of them, they...
So, is the area burned up at all?
There's a large telephone pole and... In that island, and I guess you can't see it, I'm trying to find it myself. Oh, there it is, it's a utility pole, about halfway down through the middle.
Okay.
There's a utility pole there with some electrical boxes. Once in a while, the church has a function in the parking lot where they plug in something. And so they wanted that greenbelt strip to protect the pole and to be able to put equipment on that if they ever have a function, I guess.
Is there at least a pedestrian path?
Two sidewalks that go through there, yeah.
There are two sidewalks.
Yes, yep. And that just shows up as a little concrete between them, but there's two little sidewalks between them, yeah.
Okay, so is this island curbed at all?
It's not curbed, it was... We have some contours, it's a couple of feet tall, it's mounded.
Okay, so it is going to be slightly burned, so someone will see it and they won't drive across through it?
Hopefully, especially in the wintertime.
Okay, and is it going to be seeded?
It's going to be grass.
Grass.
Yes, all grass and bushes, and they don't have a plan for it. I mean, it wasn't necessarily a requirement, so they didn't have a detailed plan of it, but the church has other areas in the parking lots that people have taken as their own and made a beautiful little project. The corner is actually really beautiful with flowers and they just...
And then the pedestrian walkways, those are going to be concrete?
Yes.
This is north.
Okay.
Yeah.
Where is the church building in relation to what we see there?
South of Dwight Street. So you see where Dwight Street? The whole church facility is down there, south of there.
And what is the overall condition of the two existing lots?
The one to the south on the east side was just reconstructed two years ago. That's in very good shape.
Okay.
That was just resurfaced and a new catch basin put in it, and a new dumpster pad in the corner, and we cleaned up all the curb cuts. The one on the west side is not very old either, so that's in very good condition too, from what I remember. They really do keep the facility impressingly well.
Does this more than double the number of spaces it has?
There are a number of parking lots. There's... So to answer your question, on the west side, in the southwest corner, I would say it's not quite doubling it. This parking lot that's on the... I mean, I can count them, but it looks like it's pretty close to doubling it. But I think they have another lot on the other side of Dwight Street. And then there is street parking off... No, there is street parking down Sixth Street, in front of the church.
Question for staff?
Yes.
Is parking lot lighting a requirement of the zoning ordinance?
No, it is not.
It is not?
It is not.
So it's left up to the option of...
It is. It addresses the type of lighting if there is lighting.
That's it for me.
Any other questions? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the site plan for Mount Olive Missionary Institutional Missionary Baptist Church? The site plan for expanding its parking lots on Sixth Street and Farwell Street? Ooh, I do have one question. When are you going to start this?
They've already taken construction bids, so as soon as pyramid paving can get out there to start. I'm thinking, you know, possibly a week. They have to get permits from the city still.
Final approval from engineering. What's the completion date on this?
It's going to be by November 15th. That's normally closed on the asphalt plans.
Okay, well, let me just go and retract that other motion and make another motion. Do I hear a motion to approve Mount Olive Institutional Missionary Baptist Church expansion of the parking lots on Sixth and Farwell with a completion date of November 15th? And this is contingent on final approval from engineering.
So...
Do I hear a second?
Support?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No one's opposed. Wonderful.
Thank you. Have a very nice...
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Thanks, John.
Yeah, that you do.
Second? All in favor, let's go.
I've got another meeting to go to.